One of the things that is important is we listen to our candidates all respectfully and make sure we hear and understand what they're saying. We have questions that we've taken from the group, put into a container back here that we're going to read from that. We're not going to take questions from the floor. We're going to take the questions from the ones that were written down. I haven't seen them, so we'll see how that works for us. Before we got started with the conversation with our folks that are running for office, I wanted to point out a little bit about who we are and who the Central Oregon Patriots are. We've been called a lot of them, but in fact, they made me dress up for this. And I got, you know, the family tie. Unfortunately, my brother-in-law untied it the last time he was used, and I had to start tying it yesterday, but I got it worked out. One of the things that I want to go over is some of the things that the Patriots do. This is something that gets lost in white noise. As an organization, I've got to list a few of the things that we have done in the past few years that some of you have attended, many of you have attended, and many of you have been informed about. We're working on a project now to save regular ranger stations. A lot of things are happening there that may or may not be able to happen, but we're sure trying to save it. Some other things that we've done, we've brought your attention to the Oregon wild situation in the forest, and that has generated up to a meeting that was run by the county court that had 700 visitors at that meeting. We were on the ground floor trying to educate the community about a new justice center. And now, as you know, that's going to ballot, and I want political safety, and I encourage you to vote for it. Another product, project we had was, we felt as Central Oregon Patriots that we needed a natural resource plan we could give to the county court. That was bigger than us. We could not do that as Patriots alone. So there was a new pact that was formed. We pulled together information from 200 citizens in the community, and we developed that natural resource plan, and we handed it off to the county court. The natural resource, a pact handed it off to the county court. Now, there's some information on the back counter about that if you're interested in finding out about it. We brought several things like other political debates. We've had gubernatorial debates here in Creek County, which is not something you see here very often. And we did that over the school at the auditorium years back, and there's other events we've done there. For instance, the Oregon wild information and the justice center plan, we put that together, and we had that over at the high school as well. Some other things that we've done for the community, and again, it's all about educating people what's going on around us. It's sometimes very hard to get information to people in a county the size of ours that has a low population compared to other counties around us that have a big number. We brought several informative movies to the theater here, and we paid for the movie. We brought it in, and we had a good turnout on all of those movies. We've also been supporting job development in the community. In fact, we have provided funds for individuals to start up home businesses and materials, to start up home businesses in the community for those people that have diabetes, they just can't be away from home because of a child or something of that nature. Those are just a few. And we provided a lot of money and supplies to different organizations in the community that support and help families with children, everything for money to die for a spending. That's what the Central Oregon Patriots are about. Now, I know there's people out there that say, "Well, you know what? They're a militia." Diane, Mrs. Harbinger, are you here for someone?
Yes.
Would you please stand up? If you want to find out about the militia, she's in charge. Okay. But anyway, I really appreciate you being here, and without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to Ken Taylor. He's going to emcee this because he's got a lot of experience doing it, and I'll say it his way. Ken?
If you would, please stand with me for a pledge. Brother John, would you lead us out?
Go ahead. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, let me just start off with, we have four children from this community that are loved and respected by a lot of folks. And we're fortunate to have them here. We're fortunate to have them running for office so that we, as a community, can be represented well, and our government can move forward in a way that reflects us. It's a big deal. I'm going to start with the ground rules, so to speak, for short. Just a series of questions we prepared, questions from the audience. We'll bring it up and draw directly from the jar. You're going to have two minutes to answer, so you have to be sharp and on your toes. And don't answer them while I'm here. Okay, so the questions for the citizens, we're going to try to make sure that we have as much time as possible so that those can be answered. You will have two extensions of two minutes each, so if there's a question and just really gets to a point we need to make, you have an extra two minutes, two times during this debate, and go for it, use it. If you need a lifeline, anybody know what that is? It's like a TV show.
Thought a friend?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any, so anyway, we're going to get started. I just want to, first of all, introduce our county commissioner candidates, Jason Carr and Jerry Brunner. I know you folks understand how fortunate we are to have these two of you up here on the stage. And I'm blessed, just to be here today. Thank you. We're going to start. You ready?
Ready.
Okay, and you next to stay. See, understand that please pass the microphone back and forth between them. Okay? We'll start with Jason. Everybody has a starting point. What's your purpose for running for county commissioner?
Well, I was figuring that might come up, the purpose, the reason. And I was thinking the other day, as a little kid, my grandmother would come and visit with us, and every night when she was there, she would tuck my sister and I in bed and read us Bible verses, usually from the book of John. That was one of her favorites. But she always would quote verses from Proverbs, and in Proverbs 29:18, which was one that she would always talk about, which is, of course, as a kid, I had no really clue what the meaning was at the time, but it was that without a vision, the people perish. And it was something that, you know, as I got older, that has, you know, stuck with me. And when I got into community leadership, when I moved here to Bryanville a decade ago, began as the economic development director, have worked in a number of different capacities, and currently as a city councillor, that is something that I have kept in mind, in that it is important for a leader to set a vision for the people so that people understand where we're going, and at the same time, working with the people so that they can help you build that vision. And, you know, for me, we're all going to have different visions, a little bit different way of looking at the community because of my background and things that are important to me. Number one, our jobs and economic development. I just saw some statistics in that data today. We still have overall 20% poverty in this community. We have a labor force participation rate, which means people actually who are in that age range of working is 60% is the average in the state of Oregon. Creek County is 50%. It's even lower among kids in the 16 to 24 age range. So we still have an economic issue that we have got to overcome, so having a vision for that, I think, is really important. As a former journalist, for me, having a vision about open communication, working with citizens, being upfront with that, being willing to hear things, being willing and being okay with being criticized and challenged at times, that to me is important. The more I learn from you, the more I understand from you, the better decisions that I can make. And then just overall, having a vision about long-term budgeting and planning so that we can utilize our taxpayer resources to the best of our ability.
I forgot to tell you, when your time is up, I have this adorable ding. So when you hear ding?
Now I know.
There you go. Sorry. I should be very clear about that. I'm going to turn this phone a little bit so you guys can see me, and I'll give you a little... Oh, flash my eyes, actually. Jerry, so tell us, what's your purpose for running?
Well, I guess the reason that I decided to run for county commissioner, I've been involved with the community for a long time, served on a lot of different boards and committees throughout the years. I'm a fifth generation, my family has lived here. My great-great-granddad came through going to Los Angeles, Waco, in 1845, settled in Albany, Oregon, came back to Creek County in 1872, and we've had family here ever since. My great-granddad helped build the courthouse, helped build this building here, so we've had a lot of my in the community. And the history, the culture, the values that we all enjoy in this community, I want to see those retained, and I want to work on that. Some other concerns that I have, I guess not concerns, some things I'd like to work on, is the Juniper Canyon, another access out of Juniper Canyon. I was on the county planning committee for nine years from 1996 to 2005, and I tried to get a road dedicated to it, tried to get it done. We had subtraction, we supplied three monies, and then that disappeared, and there hasn't been much done. So I feel like if I can get elected and have a little more clout at the state level, that it'll give me an opportunity to appropriate some funding from the state or federal government to help with that. One of the other things that's on my priority is a new jail. We definitely need a new jail. It's time. We should have done that years ago. It didn't happen. I worked on a committee for a while. I got busy with other things, and I've actually helped with the pack here the last couple of three months trying to get that passed. That's very important. I think we need to work on our natural resources. I actually, I didn't understand...
Ding. I did it about three times, but I didn't do it a lot enough, so that's my fault. That's on me.
You just winked one eye.
Okay. Jerry, this will be for you to start with. The practice in the court has been to assign each commissioner oversight of certain departments. At least, that's my understanding. Which departments do you think you would be the most effective in overseeing?
Well, the planning department, being on the planning commission for a number of years, I think I could be some help to that department. I think the county road department, being in public works for 20 years, I think I understand the infrastructure, the funding, the stuff it takes to make that happen. And I know right now, there's a good chance we're going to lose our rural roads and school funds. However, we may get them again for another year, but we've got a budget. Somehow, we'll make up for that loss. So I think those two departments would be two departments that I have some knowledge in, and I would be a beneficiary to the county in those departments.
Thank you. Jason, same question. Which of the departments do you think you would be most effective in overseeing?
Well, I think with my economic development background and focus in that area, that probably the community development and planning provisions. I understand those areas really well. Worked with a lot of businesses on zoning and land use issues when I was the economic development director. Worked really extensively at the city and on the council with system development charges and other sorts of core issues that you typically find in building and planning departments. You know, another aspect that I bring to the table is I have a pretty good understanding of Oregon's land use system. I work for a, currently work for a development company that develops all across the nation. And I keep getting asked, "What is this land use system all about?" And I said, "Well, Oregon's unique, and we're different ways." And, you know, for the average businessperson, somebody who even lives in Oregon to start up a company, or somebody coming out of state who's never been here before, helping them to understand how to go through that system can sometimes be a bear. And so having an advocate on the commission, having somebody who understands that process and can work with the department and the staff to streamline and be as business-friendly and community-friendly as possible.
Thank you. Okay. You know, both of you have been to a lot of meetings. You've talked to a lot of people in this community, and along the way, I'm sure that you've heard from the people what they want and what they need. I'd like for you to share what you've learned. Jason will start with you. And what you've learned about what the people want and what they need.
I would say if there's one thing that I've consistently heard is, they want government to listen. That's probably, I mean, there's a lot of things that I've heard, but I would say that that's the big one. Listening to listeners, being open about various issues, being willing to talk and be open. And I think, too, with today's technology, with websites and Facebook and social media, and the fact that really citizens now sometimes get information out before it hits, you know, the news, it's really important for us, I think, to engage to the best of our ability utilizing all the tools and resources that are at our disposal. I think the other thing that I've heard a lot is wanting to make sure people understand that Creek County is changing, that there is growth happening. We have all seen the tax assessor, the tax assessments came out, and our tax rates have gone up. Part of that has to do with, you know, growing and a better economy. But I think as leaders, we need to really pay attention and hear what the citizens are saying about. There may be a lot of different competing values and interests over community amenities, whether it's a pool, a jail, or whatever it might be. And so I think that over the next number of years, we need to be really cognizant about what the citizens are not only thinking and feeling, but what their pocketbook allows them to pay for.
Thank you very much. Same question. Same question, yeah. Can I get somebody to come up here and help me with these jars? Somebody pull through the jars, please. Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Okay. Yeah, I've been with quite a few people in the community, probably not as many as I would have liked to have been with. The one thing that I hear all the time is the natural resources. And I've been hearing quite a lot about that. And the coordination process that people have been talking about here and stuff, and I actually took a week, and I went to Jordan Valley, Oregon, and talked to some friends in Wahi County, Idaho, that's been involved in this process. I went to Shaker City and tried to educate myself on your program over there, and I think I'm better for it. I understand it a lot better than I did before. I'm the type of person that I like to do my own research. If I question something, I'll go check it out for myself. But I think the people are really interested in what we can do to eliminate some of these big forest fires we got and stuff. So I think that's very important to people. I think transparency, and I think long-term planning, and I think our budgets are very important to us to make sure that we do the best job we can with the resources that we have to work with. So those are the things that I've heard people talk about, and I think we've got to communicate that, we've got to listen to people, and we've got to represent the people that elected us.
Thank you very much. Tom, give over to the general. We want to hear what the folks out here want us to do, so we're just going to do that right now. Are they going to require Facebook to plant a couple of trees on the east side of the server buildings to regain our impression that we don't worship Facebook as a community? Go ahead, Jerry.
You know, I can't answer that. I've heard some rumors. I don't know whether they're lying or not, because I haven't been directly involved with that. If I was still working for the city like I did for 20 years as a public works director, I'm sure I would know more about that. But I have heard there's going to be a berm pit up there and some trees. I don't know if that, whether that's going to happen or not, but I know one time in the city and county ordinances, in the planning department, you wasn't supposed to be able to see anything on top of the rim from the courthouse, or certainly, I guess it was certainly at that time. And I don't know if that's been changed or not. So I can't directly answer that question, yes or no, but I have heard rumors.
Thank you.
So two points on that. There actually was a plan many years ago to actually build a berm along the highway on both sides where Alton Industrial Park is and kind of in that area where Facebook is, kind of as a way to create a more aesthetically pleasing look to the community rather than industrial buildings. You know, I think that if the community, it's something the community wanted, and they wanted to use our tax dollars to pay for that, I would see why that's something that we couldn't do. I did acquire, because I had a couple, in fact, my daughter plays volleyball, and Rosie Hahnle, who's a head coach, we were at Oregon State University, and her husband Jerry pulled me aside and said, "I can see Facebook down from where we live. Why is that?" And I said, "Well, Jerry, that's a good question." So I did a little research, and technically, Facebook and Apple, they do meet the current restrictions, so there's a setback from the rimrock. I think the issue that nobody ever respected were buildings that were going to be as tall as they are. And so I think that's the issue. I think what we will need to do, which I think would be good to do, is relook at those requirements, and if you're maybe within a certain setback area of the rimrock, that maybe the height, we need to maybe look at height restrictions. I can see it from my house as well. It's not necessarily distracting, but at night, when you see kind of glowing lights on the rimrock, it's, you know, you kind of wonder about that.
Okay, Jerry, this is for you. Let's see. You said you read the Constitution, but thought it was like Bible, no one's right, no one's wrong, various interpretations. So can you tell us your interpretation relatively to your oath and the federal government limits on the state's land, resources, people, specifically the federal agencies, the Land and US Forest Service, EPA, IRS, and a whole bunch of other of those aggregate things? The roles and their relationship among the states. That's a pretty long question.
It's a pretty long question. And, yeah, and I guess what I did to say, and maybe didn't come out that way, I'm not a constitutionist. I don't study the constitutional law. I've lived in the Constitution. I've taken the oath several times, but I've lived in my mind, the Constitution can be decided by the courts, so I'm not, I don't spend a lot of time with it. And what I said was, to me, there's a lot of discussion about religion. Everybody's got their own idea of what the Bible says. Everybody's got their own idea of what the Constitution says. I don't know if any of them are right or any of them are wrong. I know the Constitution will be decided in the court law, what it means, and we can all decide ourselves what we believe about religion, what we believe about religion, and what the Bible says.
Thank you very much. Jason, I've got one for you, personal. It's very personal. I understand you're a master gardener. No, that's not it. Sorry, I got distracted. I do not know if you're employed full-time or part-time now, but I'm wondering how you plan to time-share between a job and a commission position?
So that's a good question. Well, first of all, I'm not going to let you see my back here. With all the things the kids were involved in this summer, I didn't have much of a career. Yeah. No, that's a great question, Ed. But, you know, the company I work for, we have offices in Oregon and Montana, and I kind of oversee the Oregon and Montana region, and I do some traveling, but I also work out of my home. And I had been in the position for about a year before I had decided to file. And what I have recognized with the way that my schedule works and the way that my job is set up, is that I have the flexibility built into that in order to serve. You know, I would say that right now, I've been putting in probably 15 to 20 hours a week as a volunteer, gets paid nothing for the city of Bryanville on various committees and things that I'm involved in. And so, you know, for me, if at any time it feels like I'm not able to serve the community at the capacity that I believe that is necessary, then I would quit the job that I currently have and focus on my job as a commissioner. But I can tell you that I don't believe that it will be an issue for me personally.
Thank you. Go ahead, hang on a minute, we'll go right back to you. In recent months, there have been statements from a county court that have been factually incorrect and that appear to be the basis for decision-making by the court. What would you do to ensure that the statements would be factually correct, especially if they are the basis for decision-making?
Like my own statements? Or the...
Whatever's happening. Yeah, your own statements is the only thing you can control, I suppose.
Right.
So what are you going to do to make sure what you say is correct?
You know, that's what I do every two weeks or every time that the council meets, is, you know, I think everybody knows where I stand on issues. I try to do my best to educate myself and understand the issues that come before us as council members. I'm going to be very honest with the ones about where I stand on the issue, while also taking a feedback. I don't think there's any reason for me not to be honest, even if people in the audience aren't going to agree with me. I think that's my job and my role, and I think that our government and our people are best served if we're, as Jerry and I were talking about before the meeting, we're, you know, we're straight shooters. We want to say things the way it is, and that's what you're going to get for me in my life, so.
Jerry? Cut truth from the court. What, factual statements, I mean, we don't call anybody a liar.
Well, you know, and I guess on a lot of this stuff, if we don't like the answers we hear a lot of the time, we think somebody lied about it. They may be ill-informed, they may not educated themselves, they may not have done their homework and read the documents and stuff. But the one thing I've said all the way through, I'm probably not a very good politician, but I probably make better county commissions, because I'm not going to say something to somebody, and I'm not going to fall through with it. It's just like the road up to Juniper Canyon. I have not guaranteed anybody I can get a second access out of Juniper Canyon. What I have told them, I'll work on it, and I'm planning to do that. I did it in the past, and I'm planning to do it again. So I agree, we need to be honest and forthright with everybody, and I think people respect that. And all the people, they don't have to agree with you, but at least that they respect. And I think that's what we all want.
Well, that's the kind of what comes out of the court issue, but let's talk about how people hear about what's going on in the court. You guys already talked a little bit about transparency. One of the things that it seems in this county, and I don't know why, we've tried really hard to make sure that we get word out to people and everybody's informed, that every time you do something here, it seems as though people don't hear about it for some reason or another. Do you have any ideas on how the court can get information to the, I mean, some efforts have already been made, let's face it, we've already got some efforts have been made. What can the court do to make sure that as many people are as informed of events and decisions as possible? Jason?
That's a great question. When I left journalism in 2007, it was great, as Facebook was becoming more prominent, websites for news stations and newspapers were coming online, and all of a sudden, there was kind of this new wave of people getting information. And back in the day, it was pretty much three sources. It was TV, radio, newspaper, for the most part. And now people are getting information from all sorts of different places. I was up at the first jail bond meeting, I was up at the Baptist church out of Juniper Canyon, and Sheriff Gotten was talking to a resident up there, and she was asking him about where does she get, where is he getting information out about all the meetings? And he was telling her about it, and she told him, "Well, the only thing I read is around that." And, you know, it was really interesting to hear that, because it told me that people truly do look to different sources of information. So I think that it goes back to earlier, my opening statement about communication, is that I think as government agencies, we're going to have to do the best we can to utilize all the different tools and resources that are out there to reach people in the ways in which they gather information, because it's not the same for all of us.
Same question.
Same question. Yeah, and I've been attending several of these jail meetings, and, you know, it's pretty sad. We had one down in the library here, what, Tuesday night? And there was about 15 people there, and I think 13 of us that was there were the ones that were working with the community. I think there was either two, maybe four people. They went to Florida here a week ago, and nobody showed up. We had a meeting in the creative arena, and actually had about 25 members there, people there because they're on the board. And I think that's one of the biggest groups that we've been able to talk to. So that's definitely a problem. I don't know the solution to it, but I think the more places you can put that, the better off you are. But I know I found out, unless some, maybe near to somebody's heart... But I know I found out unless someone's digging deep into somebody's heart, or it touches them pretty hard, people don't really get involved. And unfortunately, a lot of times when that happens, they don't get involved till after the fact, with the stimuli. So we do need to figure out a better way to communicate. Whether we get people there to meetings or not, I can't answer that, because I think if they're interested in it, they'll be there, and if they're not, they won't.
We have a question on Constitution for you. And it is actually the foundation for every bit of government in our country, and it comes right down to it. But there is a different mandate for the federal government and the state government and the county government. So what is your view on the purpose of county government?
You know, I think we all have to work in harmony. And I think we all have to understand the values of each one of them. And which steps we follow and follow each one of them. And like I said, I have not done a lot of research on this, Ken. So you're probably not going to get a lot of good information out of it. And that's just the way it is. But I took the oath of office several times when I was on the planning commission, I'm on the fire board, I've done that. And I guess the one thing that's really worked well for me, I took an oath forty-five years when I got married, and it's worked pretty well for me. So, you know, I read the Constitution, don't get me wrong, but I just don't spend a lot of time researching it.
Okay, thank you very much. And by the way, I did happen to see a picture of you in your bright, and on Facebook here yesterday, you're pretty, you're doing pretty good.
I was one.
Jason?
Same question.
Well, on the previous question, I just have to say we should just start calling all meetings Oregon Violet and everybody will show up. Sometimes it feels that way. Well, you know, our constitution, our government is a federalist government, and we've got different layers. And, you know, at the end of the day, we've got the supremacy clause in the Constitution, you've got states who have their purpose. Within states, you've got counties which are constitutionally mandated, and then within counties, you've got cities. And, you know, quite frankly, the one thing about county government that is really interesting is that it's fairly open in the sense that we can do a whole lot more, as long as we're within, you know, not violating the federal constitution. But there are a lot of things that we can do as a community, set our own course, live our lives the way that we want, so we govern ourselves the way we want to. So, you know, with all the stuff that's going on at a national level, and I'll mention this, my kids are here. My eleven-year-old son, watching the debate, and we're about five minutes into it, and I realize it's probably a statement he's heard from his mother or myself, was this is just a pissing match. And, you know, I thought to myself, okay, yeah, that's probably true, but, you know, it made me realize that I think sometimes we overvalue what's going on at the national level, not necessarily that it's not important, because it is. But so much of our lives is dictated by the decisions that are made here at the local level. So I think that's where we really need to focus a lot of our time and attention.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, we're going to go over to you now. Is growing government by using grants something that we should do?
Ken, I don't think growing government by grants is something we should do. I think grants have their place. And I'm going to use this building right here. This building right here, this annex right here, I was on the committee, there were seven of us, formed the capital campaign committee to make this building happen. And we went out to the community, we got eight hundred thousand dollars worth of commitment from the community, cash donations. We got two hundred thousand dollars worth of funding, we got about four hundred thousand dollars worth of grants. They were grants from the Ford Foundation, the Hollis Foundation, they were dedicated to doing certain things in this building. I think those kinds of grants are great. But I would think a lot of the grants that the county gets, yes, we call them grants, they're through the state and the federal government, which take care of our bedrooms and our medical, middle house and those kinds of things. I think we have to have them, because I think without them, we'd have to figure out some other way in order to subsidize those departments. So I think some of them have value. But to use a grant just to keep people employed or whatever that way, no, I don't think that's the best use of grants. But I think grants at least have their place.
Let me follow up a bit then. Are there, there are problems that you would see associated with some grant funding?
There are fifty, Ken, you know, and here, Ken, you know, I'd have to do some more research on that. Because I don't really know. But I do think grants have their place. I know what the Juniper Canyon is going on here. I mean, there's a lot of things in this community that's happened that wouldn't happen without grants. And I think it's helping with water sheds, it's helping with environment and stuff like that. I think we need to continue to do a lot of those types of things. But I don't think they need feedback over the counties, but.
Thank you very much. Jason?
Yeah, I agree with Terry's last thing, in the sense that if you're starting with grants and relying on them, that's, I think, where communities get in trouble. You know, school districts have been famous for starting programs based on grants that sometimes last three to five years and then the grants go away. And that's not necessarily the district's fault. I think it's just a way that you approach things. That happens not only in school districts, but also in other forms of government. The Wet Ones Project, I think is a great example of the amount of different grants that came in to lower the cost to the city and eventually to taxpayers. You know, that project has cut our sewers' development charges from about ten thousand dollars, just for sewer, for a single family home down to about forty-eight hundred currently. And, you know, this community is paying for a much less costly project that will have capacity for the long term. So I think when we can leverage grants, that'll minimize the cost to use taxpayers, give us long-term capacity, and help us to be a community where our tax base is not exorbitant, and we can pay for the infrastructure we need, I think it's important that we look at them, again, that they're not the focus and that that's not the sole thing driving any sort of government project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is from the audience. What can we do at the local level to address the national budget shortfall? It says six hundred billion. And the first staff said twenty-two billion. It might be out of the pedigree, sorry, but if you can answer that?
Is that for me?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and start with you, Jason, and then we'll let Jerry follow up on it.
Well, let me start locally. One of the issues that I think a lot of us maybe don't understand even about what's going on in Oregon with Measure Ninety-seven, for example, is that we have such a major liability within the PERS system. With the six billion dollars that is being proposed to be raised through Measure Ninety-seven, would not actually all be used for education and the other things that are being said, because there's a huge portion of that that have to go pay the PERS obligations that the state has. It's a huge problem. It's a problem that has to be dealt with. City recently went through a process of refinancing our PERS obligations, because we have a number of PERS recipients who are in the Tier One, which are the original kind of PERS employees, where essentially a lot of people are making the same salary in retirement as they were when they were working. And so when we were forecasting out and looking at what the city was going to have to pay when we have a slew of these folks retiring, our, the obligation to pay for it versus the revenue we have in the city wasn't there. So from a national debt perspective, there's really not a whole lot that we can do as a city and a county. I think more importantly, it's the PERS issue, which does affect our school district and our city especially, in how we deal with those obligations in the future.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, and I think, you know, these are probably times over these types of budgets, Social Security and PERS and stuff. I gotta agree with Jason. I don't really know if there's a good solution to it or not, or if there's any solution to it. But I do believe this, I think whether it's PERS or Social Security, those are the two things I'm going to think on. I think we have to start somewhere. And I don't think we can take it away from the people that have been guaranteed Social Security or PERS. I think we have to figure out some way in the future and give people notice that we're going to, you're not going to be able to draw it till you get older. Or, you know, some of the things where they know they can work longer, they'll have the opportunity to work longer, or do something, you know, to make work for them. I think the other thing on the national debt, one thing we're all going to have to do, we all talk and want to bring the national debt down. I agree with that. But I think we also, when it comes to that, it's going to get all of our pocketbooks, and are we all willing to do that? You know, I don't really answer that. But that's what it's going to take for us to do that, whether that's through the money that we, you know, we receive less money, or what it is, or we pay more in taxes. But that's what it's going to take to get it done, because it isn't going to take care of itself without that.
Stay right there, Jerry. A couple more questions for you. Okay, this is for both of you guys. If you and Seth are the two successful candidates, how would you prefer to choose the replacement for the vacant commission seat?
I'm sure they'll give you a rest with it.
That is the best answer I think I've ever heard.
Might take both of us.
Well, it's my understanding, the way this process works, and I know I went in and talked to Cheryl early on about this, because I am concerned about it, and I said, "What's the, you know, how's this taken care of?" And she said, "Well," she said, "I gotta do some research on this myself." So it's my understanding, it's just selected, and obviously one of us will be elected, that those two will get together and they will appoint a third commissioner. And I think, you know, everything needs to be taken into consideration. And I think one thing, whether it's Jason and Seth, or whether it's me and Seth, that's the way the election goes, we need to evaluate what are the strong points we have here now, what are our weaknesses? What do we need out here out of this third commission? You know, who has what we need? And the people that voted, you know, Jason and I are coming out first and second, is that what we need to look at? And I think that carries a lot of weight. But I also think we need to evaluate what strengths and weaknesses we have, and trying to get the best strengths we can in there to fill some positions.
Thank you. Jason, second question.
Yeah, well, the county passed a new policy dealing with how to deal with the situation. And I mean, it's pretty simple. They're, you know, take applications and anybody really who's a registered voter can apply to be a county commissioner. I agree with Jerry, you know, that whoever is up there, we all bring a different set of experiences to the table. And I think that it would be really good to look at that and see who that person might be to fill that third slot. It's, you know, it's an interesting situation to have this happen, because technically you get into office by, you know, vote of the people. And this is one of those unique situations where, you know, two city commissioners have to make that decision. And so it's a leaky decision, and it's definitely one that I won't take lightly if I'm put in that situation.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we've got about ten minutes left on your remarks, Ken. Many citizens are expressing almost a universal need or concern about politicians becoming career politicians. Decades and decades. It's a national one. We see people who've been there since before they were born. And it's kind of a funny thing. But the question's been put forward. What are your thoughts about term limits? And we'll start with Jerry.
Well, Ken, I think term limits, you know, I think for our president, it's ten years maximum, ten years or two terms. I think that's good. I think that same thing can be utilized in our local government, in the state government and stuff. I think it's good to have the history on some things, you know, to have a person, every person knows the history and stuff. But I think for a person to make a lifetime career as a politician, I don't think that's the best interest of anyone. I obviously have no desire to become a lifetime politician. I, my career's pretty well done, just because of my age. But anyways, I, you know, I just think there's value to both sides, but I do think term limits are good. But I also believe we need the history. And I would agree a little bit to Lawrence Weaver here being on the planning commission for, Paul was born seventy-five years?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. But anyways, a lot of times you get on the commission and somebody brings up something, Lawrence say, "Whoa, wait a minute, I was here then, after nineteen seventy-eight, and that wasn't the way it was. I appreciate that." So without that, there was a term limit there, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have that to be part of our decision-making process. So I think there's value both ways, but I don't get the term limits.
Thank you.
Well, I've essentially term limited myself on the city council. I'll serve four years, and if I lose the election or win, I'll be off of the city council, no matter what. You know, I think about eight years, you know, two typical terms is probably about enough. I think there is a problem with, sometimes with stagnation. I think sometimes when you get in a bubble, I don't care what bubble it is, you know, in or outside of politics, and sometimes your viewpoint can get really narrowed and you can lose perspective. And I think having that turnover is really important. You know, it's interesting, I'm somebody who enjoys history. And when you look at a lot of the terms of, you know, US representatives and senators back when, you know, our country was first founded, and even through the eighteen hundreds, it was not uncommon for somebody to serve one term, have the party pick somebody else, come back six years later. I mean, there was a lot of turnover that just naturally occurred, and quite frankly, our country is still here. So I don't see a problem with instituting term limits to keep those new and fresh ideas going.
Thank you. During this campaign, a contractor for media services for the city and county has used government resources to campaign information on the official city and county social media websites. Is that legal and ethical, the use of government resources? And if it is not, what corrective actions and sanctions would you take? Start with you, Jason.
Yeah, there are clear campaign laws around how government can utilize its resources to promote an issue or a candidate. For example, an elected politician or a leader can pretty much say and promote whatever he wants or she wants, you know, whether they're at City Hall or the county court or out of the community. Government employees, so somebody who's on the payroll of a city or county, there are clear restrictions as to what they can do. You cannot campaign specifically for a person on the city or county time or for a particular, excuse me, issue. And it is really not right to be promoting one candidate over another, you know, for example, on social media or on a website or whatever. You can't do that. You just have to give equal time to the other person. So if you say, for example, something about, you know, like Jerry, if something was put up about Jerry, then something would have to be put up about me. So we can get ourselves into a lot of trouble, and I think it's really not fair for a government agency to do it anyway. We just need to be as unbiased as possible through this process and let the citizens choose who they believe is the best for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I pretty much agree with what Jason said. This has really been a learning curve for me. First time I've ever done this in my life, I remember this back in the office. One thing that was an educational deal for me was going through ORSSAR, which is appropriate with the Secretary of State. I'm not real good on the computer, but I know some people that are. And they had just as many issues as I did navigating. And that was very frustrating to me, because certain pieces of it, you go to ORSSAR for ninety percent of it, then when you got down to the end and you turned in your signatures, you had a sheet there at three thirty-eight that you had to turn in. It was on the Secretary of State's website. So you had to go through that process. It just wasn't streamlined at all. So there have been a lot of frustrations through this. And again, I think, I think everyone should have an equal shot, whether it's, whether it's, you know, in the county government, the city government, or whatever. I think everyone should have equal time. You know, that's what it's all about. We need to stay on board, let the people vote for who they vote.
Thank you very much. This question relates to the Kirk County National Resources Political Action Committee, National Resources Plan Coordination Departments. The question, this is very long, I really don't, since the court has real immediate issues to deal with, if you let it, how much of your time and energy would you invest in this issue and why? As part of your answer, would you please address what impact you think incorporation of this requirement to county workings will have on people and businesses moving into the county?
Well, obviously, in a county with a lot of lands, both county lands and public lands, I think that it is vitally important that we manage those resources to the best of our ability. And, you know, obviously we have to work with the federal agencies. But sometimes, you know, the federal agencies, I don't think necessarily out of any, you know, ill intention, but sometimes, again, I talked earlier about kind of the narrow focus, kind of in the bubble, I think that ability to, you know, invoke coordination and make sure that the coordination and make sure that we have a voice at the table is, is important, it's necessary. Uh, and I think that we have to continue to do that, to maintain, uh, what we have and make sure that even though our logging economy isn't what it used to be, and our ranching economy isn't what it used to be, you know, um, we're not growing the same things that we used to, it's still an important part of what Kirk County is and who we're going to be. So we need everything that we can do to, uh, coordinate on that process and make sure that we're, um, advocating for ourselves and for what we need to do in the community, I think is going to be, uh, imperative for the next court.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah, and like I said earlier, I, I stood in the league over Baker County and, and Loggie County, Idaho, because I didn't understand the coordination process. I wanted to educate myself on it, and I have a document here with me, and it's called Beginner's Guide to Coordination. It's a very good guide. Uh, anyways, I've done a lot of research on this in the last couple of months because I agree we need to do something better with our resources and what we're doing. I did not understand the process. Uh, when I was asked about coordination here, uh, four, five months ago, you know, the only thing I could answer was, you know, shoot down and walk at the same time. That's what I knew about coordination. I'm sorry, but that's all I knew then. Uh, but I think today, by going through this process, the night this, the people here that's been part of that path, and I think you're definitely a place for it. I think it's a tool to have in your toolbox. Uh, I don't think it's a silver bullet anything, but I think it's something that we need to have, we need to definitely look into, uh, we need to go through the proper process on it and stuff. And the one thing that was interesting to me was the lady that's in charge of the DLM in Baker County, she said, I like it because, she said, we have some money, uh, as a federal employee. She said, not a lot, but we have some. So she said, we receive that, that gives us a direction of what we think the county wants to do. So she said, the things that we could, we, we can gear that way, she said, we'll do it. And she said, with the understanding there are certain things that we can't do. So I think it has a lot of value. I think we definitely need to do something for these forest fires that we're dealing with all the time. Uh, that's a waste of money to me, and, and so we need to get busy and figure out how we can take care of that and make it better.
Thank you. Do you wake that one?
Do I?
Do you wake that one?
Yes, I probably did.
Okay. Jason? You know, I gotta tell you, you're fantastic. You're just about right on time, or taking less time. So I haven't had a Dean yet, and, you know, I didn't realize my Dean is very charismatic, but... Okay. This was for Jason.
That's what it said.
Okay. I don't think, you should answer this. Said, what can you contribute as a commissioner for Kirk County? This is one of the hardest questions, but you've already been there, right?
I, I can't, I mean, I think...
You can swing at it, okay?
Yeah, what can I, what can I contribute? So, I think that one of the things you recognize about government, whether it's city or county, is that it's, the issues that you deal with are fairly broad, especially so as you keep moving up, so if you go from city to county, from county to state, state to federal, the issues change, the issues become more complex and more broad. And, and I think that what I bring to the table is a, a very experience that, that allows me to understand and be involved in these issues. You know, as a journalist, my job was to keep government accountable. I, I went to public meetings, um, and I, it created in me a curiosity to ask questions, to challenge what was said, to know the old Reagan adage of, um, you know, trust but verify. That's, that's something that, you know, that I live by, and that's something that I bring, you know, to my leadership in the community every day. Um, as an economic development director, I got to really understand the inner workings of this community, both from a jobs and workforce perspective. I've, I, I even had a chance, which is never something that I thought I would do, but I worked in the social services, um, arena for three years. So I, I think I was the token Republican in those offices. But, you know, I, it was, I learned a lot about the issues of, of poverty. I, I served on, I was the chair of the local higher education committee here in town, current chair of Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, which does a lot of regional economic development, testified in Salem, along with Senator, uh, excuse me, Representative McLean. I just bring that up because I think that my experience allows me to really get in and, and start to work. I understand the issues, I know what this community is, what it, what it needs, and what it needs to have that relationship with the constituents in order to, uh, solve the problems. Uh, you're winking.
No, you look like a wink, but that was a wink. Okay. That's your, thank you. Appreciate it. Jerry, go ahead and answer the same question because that's, I mean, you've already done it, but recap what you, what you need to keep that, um, remember what it was. What can you contribute, uh, as a commissioner?
What can I contribute as a commissioner?
I think this is actually more about money, how much you're going to put in your goal. Just saying.
Well, I, I'm here to, I'm just trying to reiterate that I've, I've been on law and budget committees, uh, I have a fifteen-dollar budget that I was in charge of as a public courts director, dropped a ten million dollars a year for getting done the system development projects we had going on at different times. I've been on the budget committee for the fire department for thirteen years. I've been on the board there. I've been on this historical society board. I'm only seventeen here now. Uh, so maybe a term limit isn't a good thing. But, but anyways, uh, you know, I, I think those are the kind of things, you know, you can, I, I can bring to the table, and I kind of think I've been involved in the community all my life, I've lived here my entire life, uh, I feel I know what the people like here, and the culture that they want. Uh, and I'm sorry, like I told Ben Bullock, and I said, uh, there's two things that I don't want. I don't want primary to become mid, and I don't want Kirk County to become issues county. So I guess that's all I can do.
Thank you. Okay. Last question, guys, Ken. Thank you so much. You guys have just been fantastic in these, uh, question answers. So, very last question. What is your top priority as commissioner in Kirk County? And what do we begin working on? Jared, go ahead.
Well, I think right now, my top priority would be the jail. Um, you know, we needed this for a long time, I think, the sheriff, uh, he doesn't have an opportunity, the jail people don't have an opportunity to do their job properly. They're mandated by the state to, to do certain things. They do not have the facilities to do that in. Uh, and we got up to ninety or a hundred criminals out on the streets all the time, uh, that don't serve their time. If it goes long enough, they either have to serve their time. So I think we need to make people accountable. And I think this is stuff we can afford. We're spending upwards of, of eight hundred thousand dollars a year in Jefferson County right now. Let's keep that money here. We need to keep it here, and we need to serve our, our people, uh, whether it's, it's good or bad. I think a lot of people need to go to jail, they're not criminals, they, they just have a bad day, they did something wrong, we have to take care of them, and we have to protect them while we're in there. And that can't be done. So I think that's, that's my top priority.
Thank you very much. Jason?
So a quick question, will we have a closing statement or...
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I think it's no surprise to anybody in this room, given my background, that the jobs and economic development, uh, was why I ran for city council, and it's one of the major reasons why I'm here for county judge, or, excuse me, county commissioner. I, uh... You really, you really call that a Freudian slip?
Yeah, that term limits stuff, yeah.
Thanks. Is that the core? Um, I, I stated some of the, the challenges that we still have, you know, the issues of poverty, the issues of young kids not working, the issues of a lot of people still being underemployed, even though they are employed, they're not making as much money as they're worth, or, uh, they're not working as many hours as they would like. And quite frankly, at the end of the day, uh, if we don't have people working and we don't have a good workforce, we're not going to have the tax base and the resources to pay for the things that we all expect from county government, and even some of those other amenities that we want, like a, you know, possibly a swimming pool or a sports facility, or whatever those things might be. So for me, that, it just gets back to basics. And, uh, again, uh, given how long I've been engaged in that issue, it would just be an easy transition for me from the council to the county court.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, that's it for the questions. You, you did answer that, that's your top runner again. I, I lost track, uh, too much winking. So we have two minutes now for a closing statement, and we'll, we'll let, uh, we'll let Jason start, actually, we'll let Jerry finish up. Does that work? Is that okay? Ben?
So one of the things that I have had a lot of people, um, say to me is because they see the changes that are occurring, the growth that's especially happening in Ben. And in fact, my wife and I, after church, went to a plant pioneer for lunch and ran into a gal from Ben who specifically moved here because she couldn't buy a home that she could afford in Ben. And so it's just another indication to me that, uh, you know, even if you don't promote growth in our community, it's going to come whether we like it or not. And I, I do hear people, you know, I just don't want our small-town charm and our heritage to change. And, you know, somebody who grew up in Central Oregon, I, I agree with that. Um, to me, it gets back to, as leadership, having a vision to be able to deal with that. You know, we can't just put our hands down and act like it's not happening because it is. And so having a vision for how we're going to function as a community, the priorities, the strengths and weaknesses that we have, making sure that those are clear, that we have goals and objectives, that those are tied to our budgeting process, like, um, I've been involved at the city level, I think is going to be really important, uh, for our community moving forward. Um, I, I found this quote that I wanted to share. It's from an, an English writer from the seventeenth century, William Wadsworth, that says, "Life is divided into three terms: that which was, which is, and which will be. Let us learn from the past to profit by the present, and from the present to live better in the future." And for me, it's all about, as a leader, having a vision to make sure that, yes, we keep the heritage and the charm that we have in this community, but at the same time, that we know how we're going to ensure that this place remains a great place for all of us to live, work, and play along to the future. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Uh, and one thing, I guess I'd just like to remind people the things that I've been involved with in the community, the land project, Jason spoke of earlier, I spent the last four years before I retired working on that. Uh, that was going to cost the residents sixty million dollars. It ended up being a seventy million dollar project, and they got between three and a half and four million dollars worth of grants. So that saved the community a lot of money. This building right here, I had an opportunity to work on that and make it happen. Along this pharmacy building, uh, the historical society acquired it here about a month ago. And the fire board acquired a billion over there. So I look into the future and try to, like, get these buildings bought and get property bought and stuff, because we really need to plan for the future. Uh, if we don't do them things when the opportunity, those things when the opportunity arises, like, then you don't be available. And I guess I'd just like, like to close with this. It's my desire that other residents in the area and those that have found their Great Valley take the same mind I have in this community. There is much to enjoy in our gateway to the Ochocouls.